There you go. Hi. On September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at one thirty in the afternoon, we are located in the first floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, fifteen hundred Highway Two Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Please take note of the hearing procedure on the screen. Or at least take note of how they get their own. Okay.
Yeah, we can come give me a sec.
So. Are there any corrections or changes to the August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two hearing minutes? And I declare them approved. Why don't we go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance? Say it one more time. I pledge allegiance to the God of our. So here we go up on the screen are the procedures, hearing procedure. Basically, if staff presents the report, applicant is provides overview of the project, answers any questions, and then we have public testimony, at which time when that is over, the applicant has a chance to rebut any testimony. And then I will close that testimony, deliberate, and close the hearing. Okay. Let's see. So are there any changes to our agenda for today? Okay, then I go ahead and approve the agenda. Are there any announcements? No. Okay, and I've already approved the minutes from the last meeting. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the file description. This is file CUP zero 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 eight dash twenty-two, conditional use permit, multifamily dwelling. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to construct a multifamily dwelling. The property is three point two six acres. The property is owned commercial. The project is located off of Coca-Lala Loop in section five Township fifty-five North Range two west Boise Meridian. And I do not have any conflict of interest with this project. So I will turn it over to staff.
Good afternoon, Hearing Examiner, Daniel Britt, Planning Staff, the record. We're here to discuss a conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling in a public utility facility. These are the applicable standards for which this application was reviewed. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build a twelve-unit multifamily dwelling for year-round living in a public utility facility. Lot is located on Highway ninety-five in Coca-Lala Loop. Lot is approximately three point two six acres. Background on this three point two six acres, it is a flat lot, it is owned commercial, and its land use designation is transition. Parcel is located on the corner, Highway ninety-five in Coca-Lala Loop. Access to the lot is on Coca-Lala Loop itself. So environmental features discussed about this parcel, there really aren't any. It's pretty unremarkable. It does not contain any rap slopes or wetlands. There's not any river, stream, or lake frontage on this parcel. It is currently served by an individual well, in septic. In the staff report, there's an error that fire service is provided by Schweitzer. That's not the case. It's South Creek Fire District. Make you aware of that. Power will be provided by Northern Lights. It's within Lake Thunder Grace School District number eighty-four. These are the following agencies that we review or routed for comments. Idaho Department of Water Resources, Bonner County Grottenbridge, and DQ also letters of comments they find in the file today. And Panhandle Health and Idaho Department of Fishing Game had no comments. No public comments were received on this file. So in addition to having to meet the performance standards per Bonner County Revised Code, there's a couple additional standards that this project needs to meet. And I'll discuss this here in the next few minutes. So this is our commercial use table for multifamily dwellings, which this project is. As mentioned, the additional requirements have to meet is note number five, six, and seven for the commercial use table. So we'll discuss those notes now. Note five, that the ground floor residential uses are prohibited within hundred feet of a state highway or designated arterial. Based on the site plan, this proposal is beating the above standard. Highway ninety-five is a hundred fifty-seven feet away from the ground floor exceeding the hundred-foot requirement. Coca-Lala Loop is not considered an arterial right-of-way, therefore, the proposal is not subject to the hundred-foot setback. Multifamily dwellings within are required to have a minimum of twelve thousand square feet of lot area for the first unit, plus an additional three thousand square feet for each additional unit. Meaning three thousand square feet of land, not for the structure itself. The structure is approximately eighteen thousand square feet. And this standard requires a lot be a minimum of forty-five thousand square feet. The standard is being met as the lot is a hundred and forty-two thousand square feet. That can is proposed a private community water and sewer system for this project which qualifies as urban services. Note seven is not applicable to this project because it's not a proposal for a subdivision. It's a one unit or it's a twelve-unit one structure building. It's not going to be divided up. The public use table is the public utility facility, which is part of this project. They're conditionally allowed in the commercial district, and they have to also meet note six and eleven. So note six goes to the public utility facility in the respects to noise like glare, smoke, or dust, vibrations, not be adversely affect neighbors, and meet state and federal standards. Given that the the proposal is an underground system very similar to a residential use type, none of these should be an issue. So the response that the applicant provided meets the code. The second part, note eleven of this project is highlighted really in yellow where it affects what the requirements here, since it is an underground system they're proposing, you know, structures are involved with the this portion of it, the sewage management agreement shall be approved, executed prior to issues of the conditional use permit for subsurface sewage disposal system serving ten or more residential dwelling units or designed with a capacity of twenty-five hundred gallons or more per day. They're required to meet this portion of the code because they have both a twelve-unit complex. So it they will be meeting this standard based on the information they submitted for the public utility facility. Findings of fact haven't changed since done staff report or the conclusions of law. These are the conditions of approval as found in the staff report. It must be met, right issuance. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. I've taken questions my path.
I do saw that there was an existing barn that they were saying currently was going to be used for to store construction. Does that fall under the outdoor storage? There was.
It does not. The applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they mentioned that they would be tearing that barn down. So obviously, there's going to be storage.
Well, because then later on.
Construction materials at the site during the time of construction.
Because I did notice later in the application that it does refer to storing snow removal equipment and landscaping equipment in that barn. So I'm guessing it is same. I just thought a little bit.
Don't have that question in front of me. I'm sure the applicant can speak to that better than I can.
Okay, I will find out. I just didn't see it addressed. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, so then we'll have the applicant come up, please, and make their presentation.
My name is Travis Thompson, and we represent, Sheila and I represent the applicant, Thomas and Darla Fletcher. So the I'll just keep it brief. I guess the main reason we're interested in this project was in the county currently, if you want to build twelve units with the in an R five designation, it would take sixty acres to do that. And if you did it in an R ten, it would take a hundred and twenty acres. And so Thomas and Darla and I had talked and we thought, well, why, why don't we do this? It'll, we could put twelve units in and not utilize sixty to a hundred and twenty acres of land. We could utilize it a lot that otherwise doesn't have much use for anything else. So that's how the project came about. So when we designed it to fit all of the codes which which it meets. So that's the how the project came about. And so we're excited to be able to do this this project here. And the barn, we're proposing that the barn stays because it has adds value to the property, can use for storage. It's a building that the neighborhood is quite fond of. So I there the rest was covered in the staff report. I don't know if there's any other questions for us.
No, you just answered it. Thank you about the barn. Yeah. Okay. All right. So at this point, doesn't even, I guess I'm the only one that would have any questions. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open it up and see. Go ahead and say thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up to testimony. And I will quickly read through the rules. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person. So they may have up to six minutes to speak. No one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will also not be allowed. So at this point is does anyone have a written statement that they would like to enter into the record? Then I will call for any supporting public testimony in person or online. Anyone would like to make?
No, we don't have.
No one online? Any neutral customer in support of?
Yes, me.
Okay, would you please step up there and state your name for the record?
My name is Darla Fletcher, and I'd like to say that I very much would like to see this project go forward. I think that we have a big need right now to give families a safe and a large enough facility to live in so that their their children can be safe and have a good school district to go to. And so I'm I feel really committed to this project. I'd also like to say one comment about barn again, as it's known in the community. And that is, it actually needs historical requirements to be registered because it was it's it's got some pretty cool history in the community. It was built by a Mr. Hatcher in nineteen thirty as a dairy barn. And it's twelve thousand square foot facility that stood the test of time. And it's been home to the Little League for the last three years. It's their winter practice facility. And I think that it was what Travis said is very true. There's a lot of fond memories associated with that building, and I'd really like to see it stay there for the good of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other supporting testimony? Or neutral testimony? Okay, and how about any opposing testimony? Still don't have anybody online. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public testimony. And since there's obviously no one for you guys to rebut. Okay, and I'm just going to take a minute here.
I can answer a question.
Oh, yes, please.
So outdoor storage is more for when you're storing equipment or stuff outside, not in a structure. So I think having the barn onsite meets the qualifications of accessory structure. It's accessory to what the uses of the CUP. So storing so so moveable equipment that's going to be used to, you know, to augment or to enhance the the use of the CUP. I think it's all accessory to that primary use, and it falls under the accessory role. Or sorry, accessory structure, which is a permanent use, not it's straight primitive in that zone. Outdoor would be like if you were proposing, in addition to this, you know, storing used cars as a used car lot or something like that.
Or construction yard.
Instruction. Yeah, so that that requires some screening standards and some other things because it's, you know, maybe it could be an eyesore for the community. Given that it's inside of a structure and it's accessory to the CUP and what they're requesting it.
That's that was what I was wondering because it was not in the out in the staff report. It said there was no outdoor storage, but then they were saying they were using it for storage. It wasn't exactly clear on what that it's like, how that would work out.
Look up under twelve dash four five three standards under J's, outdoor storage. Outdoor storage of commercial industrial materials. So it's really like we have a pile of stuff sitting here in this for a commercial or an industrial use, you know, we have sawdust that we sell on occasion.
Oh, yeah.
So then we're going to put some screening around it to make it less of an ISO for the community. So that's when we look at that standard for as a condition.
Okay, thank you. That taught me a lot.
I just thought.
When I was reading through it, okay, I'm going to have to ask that one. Okay, so. This is the part where I mutter to myself. Since I have no.
Part of deliberative process. I think part of that deliberation is really if you're leaning part of truth and I or what conditions you want to add, I would just kind of typically you had a commission to argue with, right?
Right.
But then sitting in the seat by yourself and feel free to jump in. I would kind of state as to, you know, I agree with staff's conclusions or something along those lines. It appears that the staff report did a thorough analysis, and I don't have any additional conditions of approval because I think all commissions have been met. Or sorry, our standards have been met given the condition presented by staff or something along those lines. Is rather than just jump right to a decision, kind of like what leads you to that decision and explain a little bit of that. So that's.
That's a great, that's a great standard.
And I've been thinking about this.
We were, you know, I've heard it afterwards, and we'll chat about that too. But when we when we talk about deliberation, he's right. In our our experience here in the county is always as between a planning commission is only commissioner of the Board of Commissioners. Like our with the hearing examiner position and the new one for us is so greatly appreciated. But it's a little harder to talk. It's it is a little bit. You have to you kind of have to force yourself to go into the deliberative process and speak those things out loud as opposed to having debate between commissioners, right? But you know, we already in the county have proposed a staff report that has these proposed findings in it. And I don't think so. If you choose to adopt that, you already have kind of a pre a pre-made, you know, finding for you for you. But I always encourage the Board of Commissioners and the other commissioners to to definitely during deliberations to articulate themselves, right? If only to ratify what's in the staff report, that's great. If not, then you have the right to do the freedom to do that as well. But just in the event that, you know, the likelihood of of challenge in this case is slim, given there's no no opposition, right? So we're okay here. But we have other contentious hearings, and in those cases, it's even more important to really be clear in articulating your position because, you know, in the courtroom, in the courtroom, the fact binder at the administrative level is given a lot of deference. Where the zoning authority gets to interpret its own code, that's you. But in order to take advantage of that deference, you have to you have to give your give your position, stake your position out. And then you'll be getting, yeah, so that's the last, that's the reason we do it, right? I mean, most people don't come down to that, but it's a great practice to be in just for clarity of purpose, so everybody understands.
Okay, here goes. Well, I definitely see that there is a need for additional housing in Bonner County and diverse housing, and I believe that this proposal is meeting that need or helping to meet that need. I also want to compliment you on the application that you guys submitted. It was very thorough. I really appreciated that. It's very well laid out, very easy to read. And I appreciate what the staff did for the planning department to make that easily easier for me to understand the background and everything that went along with all of this. Well, not much of it. And thank you for the background on the barn. That was really interesting to hear about that. I had not known about some of the historical use of that barn. So that was neat. Appreciate it hearing that, and that did answer my questions also. Between your description and Jake talking about the use of that barn that helps a lot. So I agree with the staff that this project is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code based on the information found in the staff report. And therefore, I move to approve this project file CUP zero 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 eight dash two-two for multifamily dwelling and public utility facility, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at the hearing. I further moved to adopt the findings of fact and conclusion of law as set forth in the staff report or as amended during this hearing, which they were not. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be the action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property. Okay. Are there any schedule reminders, updates, or announcements?
Yeah, usually I kind of get away from the team when I come sit down here, and then we're kind of well, that's it for you guys.
Sorry, I should quickly state that that file is now closed. This is only my third time.
You'll get a written decision from us that just kind of explains.
And I will get that written decision to you guys within five business days.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Generated image, I'm glad to have a nice way to. This one's a really good one because it's. Oral treatment standard, right? Wow, that's that is great. When I did my review, kind of once staff gets done with theirs, and we talk about projects, especially if it does have this. I do a pretty adept review of their file before they publish. There's a lot of stuff that will be a lot of.
Should I close the hearing up?
Um, yeah, we don't need to be part of open hearing to have just a discussion on practice and nothing.
Okay, so then it is one fifty-five and I.
Well, we we noticed this on the agenda.
Oh, and so for me to be.
Okay.
So I can leave it open.
It certainly it's certainly nothing.
I don't need to go.
And that's it's some I would kind of we stay consistent with how we train the planning and zoning. Yes, the first meetings when those guys started in April was a train with me.
So a meet and greet and just an introduction and kind of some ground rules and things that you might be interested in. Do I need to, I mean, we just going to record okay right here by. Yeah, I mean, I'll be up there. It's just just us. Man, okay. All right. So one one thought on this one is that to the just I know we use the form like I moved to.
Right.
Because.
Just say I approve.
I would say, yeah, I would say I approve or deny just because a move in a second and a vote would be.
Oh, yeah.
Would be kind of reminiscent of a of a commission. It's we only have right, just one here. I don't know if that, obviously, we know what's happening. I just thought maybe for future files, you know. It's all about taking the language and chair out.
Yeah, I wondered about that too. I was going to ask you guys about the chairman.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff has been.
Which is have the chairman sign.
No, that's fine. The chairman, yeah, because that's actually.
Me.
You that it's not being signed by.
Signed by her.
It's being signed by her, right? So let's just make sure we have, we don't, that's a copy paste thing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'll draft up a revision of that and send it to you as like a template and then get it to the.
Good.
And this is hearing examiner for the department's really new. We have we have one nine years ago, but.
For the.
Been here for eight years, and we never had.
It must have been all pre, maybe it was two thousand and seven. It was a while back. So anyway, that's that would be the first thing I want to leave with, which is I am thrilled to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. There are other counties that rely almost exclusively on the hearing examiner. You know, format. I think Cooley County does that a lot.
They have like three.
Yeah, they do. And so with you know, with a little with as time goes along and you do more files, I mean, I already love your presentation and your, you know, just the way that you were progressing through the materials. That was great. It's sometimes it's harder to do that when there's a bunch of people up here all trying to, yeah, so.
She wrote me an awesome script.
So what I so just with with that, you know, what I did when we bifurcated our planning and zoning commission and got new members in there, I met with both of those groups. And just kind of welcomed them to the 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 concept of public service in this context, right? And you were a little different from them because you're not appointed via statute in a formal sense like they are, but you're essentially covering the same subject matter. Like these things are things they would be looking at if you weren't doing it.
Yeah.
So I think most of the same rules are going to apply, right? And so I just want to give you a primer on a couple of things that we have to worry about when we're in the quasi judicial context. Here we are, right? And those are, you know, the conflict of interest provisions that we're all subject to. And then also some thoughts about ex parte communication and the deliberative process, which we already kind of dealt there too. So we already kind of handled some of that. I would, I don't have your email address, but I will get it if I haven't. Okay, so instead of printing off some stuff to bring to you, I figured I would just talk about it now and afterwards get your email address and send you PDF.
Oh, that'd be good.
That's the way the world works, right? All right, conflict of interests. This was actually kind of a nuanced thing. There's a particular staff, well, there's an entire manual set out by the Attorney General's Office, Idaho Attorney. That governs conflicts of interest in general for government employees and appoint appointees and other things. And we're subject to those rules. Some of it doesn't apply to us because it's specific for different departments and things like that. But in general terms, those are good things to know. But even more specific to this context, there's a particular statute, Idaho Code sixty-seven sixty-five oh six, which governs conflicts of interest for. which governs conflicts of interest for commissioner of members of planning and zoning commissions and governing boards. Now, the funny thing is, as I prepared my comments for today, is I I don't know if that statute specifically calls out hearing examiners to be bound by its terms. I don't know, but I but I don't, but I I definitely think we should err on the side of caution and consider you subject to that rule because you're 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 dealing in the same subject matter that those groups are dealing with, right? So it wouldn't be a a big logical leap to say that you're subject to that same same rule. So assuming that's the case. That's a a much more strict conflict of interest statute than the ones that are generally applicable to other decision makers in state and county government. Whereas, you know, those other contexts, there can be a possible or a potential conflict of interest. And then a decision maker can ask for a legal opinion, um receive that and then proceed. Or maybe proceed and and participate but not vote, or there's other things they can do. Um, under that provision, it's very strict. And it just says that if there's, if if there's a real or a potential conflict of interest for a decision maker sitting in your capacity, um, then you need to recuse yourself from the decision, um and we figure out how to do that, you know, make make other arrangements, whether that mean it goes to the mission or something.
Um, yeah, essentially, if you had a conflict, we would, we wouldn't even have to do a recommendation. We would just say, oh, you know this person, it's your third cousin or whatever, and you have to treat them every other week. Right, that's a perceived conflict, we'll just, we'll we'll schedule this on the So if you can let us know sooner than later.
Yes, yes, if you could. Now, as soon as you realize it, basically. Um, and if that happens after the hearing, then so be it, you know, like if that means we have to stop the hearing and it's inconvenient, that's okay. It's better to you know, it's always better to just get that out in the open because an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right? Stop it, we're having. Um, and the definition of a conflict of interest in that statute is there. Um, you know, it's a, you know, either a personal um or or it's a pecuniary benefit, um basically money. Pretty much always, um either for you, a family member, um a a business associate, like someone you're in private business with. Um, and then there's some other rules about consanguinity, like how close of a family member that might mean kind of thing, you know, like if it's your fourth cousin, that's no big deal, but if it's your husband or your grand, your mom, probably that's an issue we want to know about, right? So just if you, I know that sometimes you don't always, you know, you might not actually see the file until you know, sometime close to the hearing, and that's fine.
Yeah.
But if, once you become aware of something like that, um let Jake know, um and then I can be quickly asked, you know, he can run that up to me and then we'll we'll figure out if that's something we need to worry about.
Like I, I almost thought this was going to end up being that way because yesterday I worked for Water Systems Management. As a staff engineer for them, and my boss handed me a file to go get photocopied. And it was for new hookups in Coca-Cola. And I was like, wait a minute, what? Looking through, oh, no, 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 that's a different spot.
Well, that's a good example, because, you know, if it was just something that came across your desk in work, right? And it didn't actually have any, like you didn't have any personal financial interest in it or anything like that, you might be okay. You know what I mean? And that's why, you know, sometimes we actually are, you know, out of a an abundance of caution. Sometimes we even go overboard, and so that's why it's good to just get it, to get the dialogue going.
Yeah.
Because there've been times with uh the the Board of Commissioners where they've asked me that question and I sometimes, there've been times when I've said, nope, you're good. And other times when I've said, no, you're not good, you need to withdraw. And so it just depends on the circumstance. They're always, always new.
Yeah.
Right?
Are you a partner in Okay, that 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 makes a big difference too. So she does like testing at community systems. Okay, so I can see where there'd be, if we're looking at a CP for a community system like we did today with the CP. Where it could be like, oh, you know, if this gets approved and then uh so next week you get raised, I think. Exactly, so. That would be one that I can see potentially coming up where it's like, oh, no, I, you know, we 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 put a bid on this system and this would cause, you know, twelve hours of work per month for me and then that's a financial It's a clear one where you would say, yeah, I don't, you know. If you see something come across your desk, you can always call us and say, hey, is this a project that's gonna come up for me?
So that's, so that's the first big, big thing is just to be cognizant of the conflict of interest statute. I will, I will, I have that at the ready. I will email it to you, just so you have the language there. And you can see what the definition of the conflict is. No worries. Um, that's the first big topic. Um, the second one is is something that you may or may not run into as a hearing examiner, um and that is the just the reality of ex parte communication. So again, we're in a, we're in a, when we have a quasi judicial format, that implicates due process protections for the parties who are involved, not just the applicants, but aggrieved neighbors. I mean, more more often than not, it's them who are asserting their rights for that.
Yeah.
And so one of those, you know, one of, kind of like the foundation of procedural due process is the right to present and rebut information. And where ex parte communication is implicated in that is, you know, you know, use an example. Like either either your unsolicited phone call, right? Someone says, hey, I'd like to tell you about this project. And, you know, you didn't solicit it, it wasn't anything of your own design, but you, in that in that phone call, you received some kind of information that influences your decision. Well, if you do that and you and you, and it's it's it remains kind of undisclosed, then that violates the due process rights of someone who may oppose the project, who didn't know what you based your decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's the way I kind of explain the ex parte problem. So it can come up in a bunch of different ways. Sometimes it's phone calls and emails and stuff, like once people understand what your role is here, you know, they might say, hey, like, I know about that file, like, oh, cocktail party or something, right? So you just have to kind of be aware of that. Um, what I have have coached the commissioners to do is not to be, you know, impolite or anything, but just to redirect them into a a more positive way and say, listen, like that's, if that's gonna be a file that's coming before me, then I I can't speak about that with you now, but here's what you should do. You can take, you can have a written statement and send it to the planning staff. Or you can come to the hearing and you can make a public statement there, and that would be the right way for you to have a like participate in this process, but I just can't talk to you about this over beer.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Different thing you might, and those you want to just dispose, you know, so and so approached me or so and so called me or I received an email from um that email was forwarded to the planning department, it's now part of the record, something like that.
Well, that's, and that's how you cure, yeah, um because there's other way, you know, we've had other commissioners, I'm not saying you're gonna do this, but we've had zoning commissioners who've taken it on themselves to go out and then like kind of do some research on topics. So don't do that. If you, don't try not to do that. Try to keep your review to the constraint, to the record that's given to you through the application process in working with the planning staff and the public house. Again, because we can, we can try to cure that, but it just creates problems that we'd rather not deal with.
Yeah.
Um, and keeping it, you know, the whole goal is transparency. And so you just don't want to do things that that other people rely on information that others don't know. So let's say you have a, um, you know, you do have the unsolicited phone call. They provide you information despite your best efforts. How do you cure this, right? So the easiest way to cure is that when the hearing, either you alert planning staff and say, here you go, someone forwarded this to my personal email address, please include this in the record for the for the upcoming hearing. There, now you've you've cured the ex parte communication because it's, by making it part of the record, you're allowing those people to have the opportunity to present and rebut that information.
All the public comments get sent to the applicants, right? So And then uh anybody can request a copy through a whole grant request on any portion of the tear. So
How about if they called you?
So there there's there's case law on this, right? So there was a um city council um uh with a guy who um received phone calls, um I don't know if it was from the developer, but interested parties and I can and actually the decision was overturned, I think in that case because he didn't disclose them. What the court said was, you can cure this by, when the, when the hearing begins, you can say, listen, and say, like, I I need to supplement the record. Um, you know, I, on such and such date, I received a call from this person advocating in favor of the file. Here's what they told me. Now you put that on, now it's in the record. That's the, that's the trick, like, everything is all about returning to, you know, making sure everybody has the same information when and knows what you're making your decision based on. So you can, that, it's all about curing that. So just keep, it it's it's pretty hard to, you know, provide an example of every possible way that could happen, but if you have a better, if you have, if you have a grasp of the of the principle, then that's gonna guide your decision making and hopefully make sure everything works out okay.
Yeah.
So, um, in this case, you could say at the beginning of the hearing, I'm aware of this area, it's on the main corridor, I committed to Court of Lane, I've driven past this, right? That's one thing, but if it's like, I stopped by one day because I saw this file's gonna be for me and I get a walk around, like that is, that's like a big, don't, don't do it.
Yeah.
So if Yeah, there's, there's case law, you you think that, like, that seems like a common sense thing, right? Yeah, not common sense, um, or at least people, some people don't have that. There were commissioners, a group of commissioners, I think in Cooley County, um, who um went and and independently toured um of the site for a proposal. We had one of those, um, I'd say probably fifteen years ago in this county. It's like the cautionary tale from the Supreme Court because the decision was kicked in large part because the commissioner went out and with the developer and looked at the site and was like, hey, this looks great, like.
Noticed meeting essentially.
Right.
So that's different, because that's part of the record. If you on your own, so it's one thing that, like, if you every year go out to a blueberry picking place and you pick blueberries from a farm, right? And then all of a sudden that farm puts a CP in to host wedding venues, right? You might want to say at the beginning, I've been out this place, I've picked blueberries on a normal basis for the last five years.
Had no reason, had nothing to do with the file.
Right, had nothing to do with the file, I believe I can be an impartial judge on this one, right? That's really what you want to come back to. Are you impartial on this and and anything that you know that isn't part of the record, you want to stink that at the beginning, right?
And by the way, to your question about site visits, they they are rare, but we have done them. And um it's just a little, we, it takes a little doing because planning staff, like, they're set up to record and do everything here. It's all nice and easy for them. Um, when we've done those in the past, you know, it's it's kind of, it's look, with one person, it'd be a lot easier. Um, I remember doing them with three commissioners in the wintertime on a snowy road.
Yeah.
And then having a um a um agenda um be like following around with a with a recorder, making sure that all the co- all the comments at between commissioners were recorded, right? Because you thought you don't want that to happen, so it's a weird thing, but it happens.
The other thing you could do is, you don't have to make a decision in the first word, you can continue it. If you get a bunch of comments and it's like unclear and you're not ready to make a decision.
Yeah, I'm gonna continue this and direct staff to do a site visit on their own and take pictures. Or have the applicant submit additional information or something along those lines to satisfy whatever the ambiguity is.
Because you're always making it public anyway.
Right, right, or it's like, hey, I'm gonna go out there myself and do a site visit to try to clear up some of this um indecision or whatever it is, right, some of the
You know, that brings up, this is just between me and the planning staff, you know, there's one thing that we maybe don't utilize enough here is the, and I've seen it used many other places, is the ability to take a matter under advisement and then issue a written decision, you know, like, not in a heated moment.
Sure.
You can't do that.
Yeah.
We typically don't, like, we typically want, you know, it's just there are practice to um, you know, how how, hopefully have the decision makers be active listeners and ask the questions and making that decision on the record, but it's just something to think about.
I've seen it with other, with other um communities, other municipalities, where it's like the hearing examiner, they end it with, um, I'll take all this under consideration and I will issue a decision with the minutes. And like, not make a decision, then you can just do all of it. You can go back home, you can read up the stuff, you can watch the recording of video from the meeting again.
After all, that's the way that, yeah, the court, the court works. Yeah, the courts almost never issue decisions.
You can't call anybody, I mean, I
No, you wouldn't wanna, no, it would only be based on what, how it happened in the public hearing and the rec and the materials that you had, that you had reviewed.
So in that, let's say if I did do that and I came up with questions, how would I get those questions answered?
Um, that's one of those, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Um, if you couldn't have them answered from the record, you you kind of have to reconcile that yourself. Um, and if the, if the, the fact that the question couldn't answer the question ma- made it impossible for you to approve the file, you might deny it.
Yeah.
I mean, or you might say, you know, like, I I have, I'd like to schedule another hearing and have more comment on this, like, we can continue to do that.
That would be
Um, if it's, the other option the hearing examiner has is to make a recommendation to to another board. So they can, she can look at this and say, hey, there's not enough in here. Um, or, you know, due to public comment and the public input on this, I feel that the zoning commission would be a better decision maker on this file. I'll make a recommendation that the zoning commission approve this file, but it's not an approval. So you're you're telling them, hey, this is, this is my finding. So there's some file types, it's only commission seems like a zone change, um where they can't make the decision. They review it, they review the facts, and then they make a written recommendation to the board, which actually approves or denies the file. So you have a similar opportunity with files where anything comes before you, you have the latitude to say, I'm gonna make a recommendation on this rather than making a decision. So and then we just schedule, so that could be one of those where if you go home, you dwell on it, you have all these unanswered questions, you could draft up your written decision and the decision could be a recommendation, so then we'll schedule a hearing. Sorry, I I don't think that's gonna be the case all that often.
A lot of it depends on public input. So today was a, was a, I mean, God, if they were all like this, we'd be like, his hair would be as big as mine. Um, they're not, you know, sometimes they get, they get contentious and you just have to be prepared for that. Um, but that's, that's part of it. Okay, so so one last thing on ex parte communications. I think we've already pretty much covered all of it. So you can cure a lot of ex parte communication, but the one part where it can become kind of essentially fatal to your ability to vote is if if the ex parte communication evidences some, like, a predetermined decision. So again, I'm going back to the case here in Bonner County from a while back. Um, in a, like, it was a conditional use permit, I think. Um, and it was gonna be, it was going to be reviewed and had been appealed to the Board of Commissioners. And at a subsequent business meeting, not one scheduled for that that file to be reviewed, but just, you know, normal business meeting. Uh, the commissioner, one of the commissioners just said on the record, like, well, I don't know why we need to have another hearing on this, we're gonna approve it. They're pretty, pretty egregious, right? Yeah, I'll send you the case, it's it's a great read. Um, and the court was like, well, that obviously shows that you've abandoned the judicial, like, you know, weighing of evidence, it's already done, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna invalidate your vote. So, so never let ex parte, I mean, you can cure ex parte communication, um, so long as you do not let it predetermine your vote. Don't do that, you're good, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so conflict of interest, and now, now we've done that, we've talked about um ex parte communication. Um, the last one, we've already kind of covered, so I will, you know, beat it into the ground, but um, what I, what I value very highly, um, from from you to planning or from uh commissions, the two commissions, and especially the Board of Commissioners, um, is to be, is to exercise your deliberate, you know, your your deliberation muscles. Because there was a time when the Board of Commissioners didn't do a great job of that. And they would just say, they listened to all the testimony, and then they would just say, all right, I'll take it, I'll, you know, entertain a motion. And one of them would be like, I don't, I don't approve. And like, so we have the staff report and and the the motion does say, I adopt the finding in the staff report, that's good. Um, but if there's, if there's a gap there and you haven't deliberated and and expressed your, like, you know, why you believe it's in accordance with the conflict, or why you, you know, or you haven't really gone down the the criteria in the ordinance and said, no, I I think we satisfied these criteria for these reasons, then you're wasting an opportunity to put like good defensible material in the record for me if if, you know, a neighbor or somebody else or or the neighbor, if it's approved, or, you know, the 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 property owner, if it's denied. Um, you're wasting that opportunity to give me the 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 raw material I need to defend the decision. And so we've, we've made big strides on that in the past, especially like if you, for example, if you um, look in this staff report, there's like, what, three solid pages of um, why the staff believes that this file is in accordance with the conflict.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Like, and by the way, if you haven't yet become familiar with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, you should totally do that. If you if you haven't provided those to her, let's make sure she has them, um, because almost everything you do requires a threshold finding that it's in accord. Requires a threshold finding that it's in accordance with the compliance. Right?
Uh, specifically CPs, variances are reviewed on those.
On the, on their stuff, but.
And same with subdivisions and. When, but CP specifically, I don't know, talk about.
And, and, right, and so it's just really good to know them. It, it shows, and, and then in, in public comment, you know, people will, will say a lot of things that may actually. Indirectly address the comprehensive plan. Like, for example, in this one, when the applicant was like, we need a affordable house. Well, well, there's a whole component about that in the comprehensive plan and she probably didn't mean to, but she spoke right directly to it. Right? So if, if you're savvy enough to be like, yes, I, I agree with you. And that actually furthers the comp, that's, that's in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So that's why, that's one reason why I think this is a great project. Boom, like, that's a really nice way to dovetail some of those things in there. You know, so. Yeah. So do that.
Thanks.
Um. And just try to articulate yourself, like, that's the best thing you can do. You, you do have the, the, the great benefit of having a good staff report that you were able to just adopt my reference. And that's always a cool thing too, but never feel like, like more is better. You know what I mean? Like, really articulating yourself is just a good thing.
And if, if you catch a standard that you miss entirely, you can add conditions in the, especially on CPs, right? You look at it and say, hey, you guys didn't analyze the lighting standard. Look up, looking on the site plan, it shows, you know, there's two lights here that propose. I'm gonna add condition A seven that states that any lighting, you know, built on the side, it has to conform with this code. So you feel free, like, we, especially with public comments, like, uh, you can take a look back at some of the zoning commission and. Their review of CP that they have. They've added six or seven sometimes and it's, I mean, about like, so.
You know what? I actually think that, you know, twelve units might actually have some dust impact. So I'm gonna actively require as a condition that you, you know, address that loosely. You have to chloride this chunk of your, you have to put down some oil on it or something, you know what I mean? Like, you have, you have the, the leeway. To, like, as you become more familiar with the standards and you get to, especially in response to public comments. That's the biggest thing. It's like, obviously here, nobody's, nobody's here to plan.
If you start going off the rails, I'll guide you back.
Yeah.
There's some specific code section that talks about conditions of approval. And sometimes the zoning commission will just kind of start going in the left field, like, whoa, guys. You gotta make conditions that are enforceable. You can say all this stuff all you want, we can put it on there, but. Can I do anything about it and can my compliance guys do anything about this? Probably not. When we can, when we get complaints, we have to be able to validate those, those concerns. And validate whether or not these conditions have been met. So, and like I said, I'll, I'll guide you back if you start going, you know, in the left hand. Um, but just know that, that's an option. So, I think, yeah, stating the reasons why, I think it's, it, it really comes down to that two percent will make it to court or whatever gets there.
Yeah.
It's having your deliberation and like, this is why I agree with staff. You know, I've reviewed this and upon my review, I find that, you know, kind of come up with your verbiage of whatnot before we. Before we make your, your, uh, your decision on something. Kind of what, what leads you to agreeing with staff or what leads you to your decision? Um, and if it's.
Certain verbiage I need to use, so if I do add conditions.
Oh, well.
Like in the last, but there was one where I said, there can be no more development on that lot.
Okay. So maybe like words shall is a helpful one.
Yeah, so. If you're able to articulate the, the condition you want. I'd say you could just work through it with staff. It doesn't have to be.
Kind of did.
Probably doesn't have to be a magic, no magic words to say, I really think that, you know, if we're gonna, this should be a condition on this project. Instead, you know, Jake, how's, what's the best way to make that work? And then you guys arrive at something that you, you, you like. And then you go, you go forward. So I wouldn't worry.
When you read your decision that order is amended during the hearing, you see orders amended and adding condition in sense, or whatever it is.
As stated on.
As stated by staff, or as stated on the record, right? And you don't have to come up with it. I can say, okay, I think I understand what you're saying is this, I think A, A six should read, you know, lighting standard shall. Be implemented in this way, you can say, that sounds great. You don't have to reiterate or re, restate it. You can say as stated by staff or as stated during the.
Yeah, I was worried about that, the last one.
Oh, it's okay. I usually, Janet will sit there and draft it out as, as the zoning commission would pull up the stuff. Sometimes it's a forty minute debate on what these conditions should be. Luckily, you decide yourself to kind of figure this out and staff to kind of back you up. So if you're, if you're trying to.
I moved it. It's been moved and seconded. I do approve my own vote. Thank everyone for coming, like.
I was gonna sit and argue with myself.
Great.
Those are the big topics that I wanted to cover.
And, yeah, that's where I have questions, that's great.
Cool. And so when I send you that stuff, you'll have my email address. I encourage you, if you have questions to come up. I mean, I have, I have a couple of emails in my inbox right now from, uh, commission members who are like, hey, I have a question about. This, this weird esoteric topic, like, can you take, you'll get this from me? I'm like, yeah, okay.
I, I sent you an email and I CC'd her and Jake, so you all have.
Good.
Each other.
Was that just now?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So when I receive all this stuff for a new file and I'm going through it. Am I allowed to call and talk to you guys before the hearing?
Yeah.
You can always talk to staff.
Okay.
Right? It's like, hey, I'm reviewing these, like, why did this standard get applied, right? If you have those kind of like, something in the staff report style questions and you want us to explain it better. Um, like, answer those type of questions. I don't think that's considered. Contact by any means.
No, no, because that's all part of the, that's all part of the official. Like, uh, the team, like, same team, like, working on, like, uh, ex parte means information provided from like. From a third-party source, essentially, yeah, um.
So I, I, and I direct. Um, the other zoning and planning commissions, like, if you're looking at a file and you have a question about peach tree jumps, don't try to figure it out on your own, right? You can dig and dig and dig into the code and oftentimes, you can call one of the, you know, the pros on this. The, the staff who do this full-time is, but why do you apply this? It's like, why is this here? Why didn't this get reviewed? And we miss things occasionally, it's like, oh, yeah, and then we'll, we'll come up with something and we'll amend the staff report or whatever it is and. We can kind of come up with some additional conditions if necessary, that kind of stuff. So, um, yeah, feel free as you're reviewing the tree jump. That can be by email as I. And then for legal stuff, if something comes back and it's like, oh, that's more of a legal, I'll bill in. Or if it's like an ex parte contact or conflict of interest potential type question, feel free to, you can CC me, you know. So this, this is where I'm at, what do you think?
We just want to help support you because we're so happy you're here.
Exactly, that's really what it is, yeah. It does, it does like. Yeah, so, I mean, you got like three, three meetings on your belt now.
Yeah.
I think coming in this time of year is great because you'll get kind of a winter of.
I agree.
These, these type of projects, we get like a one-off here or there where developers actually thinking about, I'm gonna start this next spring. Those are great, but come like beginning of summer, April, May, June, it'll ramp really far. We, we've had, uh, zoning commission meetings with like six items on them, so thinking. All the zone, zone changes are gonna go to them, um, but everything else, we're, we're gonna still schedule it with you, so.
Okay.
We kind of split the load for your first couple of meetings to kind of get your feet wet and whatnot. Um, but after, into the fire, yeah, after this, I think. I think everything going forward, we've scheduled with you and zoning commission only have one meeting this month, so. And that was kind of the intent on bringing you in is that we can get the zoning commission down to one meeting a month, which I think is, it will be great, so. And they're only looking at zone changes, so they get like one to two files and, right? Yeah. Yeah, and then any, any, uh, recommendation, any time you have a file, you recommend you go to zoning.
Okay, I, it's two thirty and I need to start making my way. Is there anything, other, other immediate questions that I can't, I can do right now? Okay, cool, we'll, I'll be on the lookout, I will send, be sending you some stuff. It's nice to meet you.
You too.
Alright, great.
Yeah.
One of our planners, Chad, um, is moving to GIS in the process. So I like to give. Updates on like what we're at staffing, so you're used to seeing some people sometimes. Disappear. So one of our planners is moving to GIS, so, um, we'll be still in that position, so we'll see when things, hopefully in the next months. Absolutely.
Of course. I have, I have.
I will have your feelings. We have seen, kind of, and this is a typical, in the summer, you've seen a slower, we haven't received as many files, so. We've seen, I mean, we don't have but one, one, uh, zoning commission, um. On the twentieth of this month, the, the planning mission of reviewing of goals, policies and objectives and making a recommendation to the board. So that should get adopted next month by the board, which is, um, depending kind of on their review of it and if they're feeling like it's, you know, ordered and permitted. Um, so that will get you the new one, the goals, policies and that can help bring to plan. So we'll get you that as, as it changes, we'll, 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 it'll affect some of our reviews, you'll see. Um, some of these goal policies and whatnot and staff reports will change and jack with that. Otherwise, the comprehensive plan, um, components are all under review, so that's what the planning commission John is, is a universal term. Um, and then we have two open seats. For the zoning commission, which, uh, which should be built within the next few weeks by the board. Um, those are kind of all the, the major changes, um. So Swati was promoted to senior planner. So Swati was promoted to senior planner recently.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, so she's kind of filling in on more, some additional responsibilities in that role. And then, uh, we have a couple of them still that we're filling in.
So are you the planning director now?
Yeah, yeah, I was actually promoted. July, in the July, early August, I don't remember, it's been about a month and a half. I should, yeah, I never told you.
That's good, that's good though.
Yeah, so you're in the assistant director role currently, I think that hasn't been built. Yep, and then, um, yeah, we promoted me. So. We're just been inundated with stuff, and I was, I was down for a couple of weeks in South Korea, which still is, so.
Yeah, and you had your thing going on too. I saw that, it got amended, or not amended.
Appealed. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, things are rolling, um, a lot, a lot of kind of change in the office. Other than that, I think it's on staff, it's not on, on these meetings, usually I like to end with kind of some updates on. The route of file loads, what could come before you.
Okay.
Um, we have, so we have the next couple of meetings, we're putting some items on that, right?
Yeah, the next one will be October fifth. Okay. During to that meeting and then, um, you'll have three at that point. Not gonna send you those labels.
Any other questions for me? That's all, yeah, thank you, Jackie.
Uh, thank you.
How, how do you want to be addressing this meeting? Like, Mrs. Rucker, Jackie?
Daniel's asking me, he's like, do I just call her, you know, hearing examiner? He's saying, if we can just say like, good afternoon, Jackie, or. Yeah, so it's like, uh, that's a normal, right? Good afternoon commissioners, like, wow. She's not a commissioner, we call her hearing examiner, that sounds so normal.
Yeah, no, Jackie's good for me.
Okay.
Okay, so then I will adjourn this hearing, it is two thirty-two. Oh, two thirty-three. And we'll adjourn until the next.